I will go ahead and begin this one's being the Water, Land, and Zoning Commission. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the February 3rd, 2015 Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Case been moved by Carol Seconded that we approve the February 3rd, 2015 Agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting located on January 6th, 2015.
I'd move to approve the minutes of the January 6th meeting.
Second.
Case been moved by Davis and Seconded that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on January 6th, 2015. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. A third item is to receive and place on file the financial report for December 2014.
This is Anderson with staff. December 2014, that would be 50% of the year for our fiscal year, which goes from July to June. Looking down through there, you can see the percentage used and received, we're right around the 50% mark or a little ways above it or below it in all categories, so we're pretty much where we should be budget-wise, moving ahead at this time.
I know last month Noel you had said that we were a little behind in income. Are we catching up with income?
Generally, where we're normally behind is in property sales, and of course, sometimes it's just a matter of when those are proposed, closed, and happen. I think we have about, I think it's, I think we're at 22,000, one of those is going to change, so we're back down to about 12,000 in property sales we have, we're processing right now. Our goal is 30,000 for the year, so we've still got some to identify.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Can I receive a motion to receive and place on file the financial report for December 2014?
So moved. Second.
Case been moved by Steve and Seconded that receive and place on file financial report for December 2014. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Okay, at this time, we would ask if any of you would like to, or like to make a presentation of anything that is not on today's agenda, to please do so. Okay, having none, we're going to move on to new business. The time is now 4:08. Our first item on our new business is a hearings rezoning, and there's a request by Green Acre Storage LLC to rezone 2.26 acres from R4RP Planned Multiple Family Residence District to BP Business Park District for the purpose of constructing a new 99,900 square foot indoor storage facility generally located east of 4015 Hurst Drive, and that begins on page nine, oh, sorry, page one. Staff report. Oh, I'm sorry. That was my fault. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating aye. Patty McGee, you hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, photos and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on January 22nd, 2015. But we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mike and Seconded that we receive and place this notice on file. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. For those of you who wish to speak for or against its request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking to the microphones.
Staff report. This is Miller with staff. The proposed rezon area is located north of land that is currently zoned BP Business Park District. The applicant would like the area to be rezoned in order to construct a three-story building to accommodate indoor storage and truck rental. The proposed rezon request would not appear to have a negative impact on the, upon existing pedestrian and traffic conditions in the area. Roads adjacent to the rezon area are San Martin Drive, which is classified as a minor arterial, Hurst Drive and Tower Park Drive, which are both classified as local streets, and Highway 20 is to the south of the rezon area, or proposed rezon area, and is classified as a principal arterial. The rezon area in question is currently zoned R4RP Plain Residence District and has been zoned as such since February 25th, 2004, excuse me, when it was rezoned from a residential Rezoning the land would not appear to have negative impact upon drainage in the surrounding area as the site is developed, or as the site is developed, it would be necessary to install appropriate stormwater control methods. No areas of the site in question are located within the flood hazard area. An eight-inch sanitary sewer is located in the center of Tower Park Drive. A 10-foot utility easement is located along the north and south property lines. A five-foot utility easement is located along the east property line, and a 20-foot utility easement is located along the south, 431 feet of the west property line. A 20-foot building line is also located along the southerly property line. Water is located along the southerly right-of-way of Tower Park Drive, and gas is located within the northerly portion of right-of-way along Tower Park Drive. There is a three-phase, a three-phase electrical line that is within the 10-foot utility easement along the south property line. The future land use map designates this area as business park, professional offices, commercial, and compatible light industrial. The rezon request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area. The site in question is located within the primary growth area and can be served by extension of existing utilities. The site plan in your package shows a three-story building with a total of 99,900 square feet, with 33,300 square feet on each floor. However, a new site plan was submitted today showing a square foot difference of 2,190 square feet for a new total of 102,090 square feet. The new site plan also shows wider drives around the building to accommodate emergency vehicles. The building will have a 3,500-square-foot unloading garage for customers to unload their items inside. A drive is located to the north of the unloading garage and wraps around the north and west side of the building to allow for safe and organized unloading route, unloading route for customers. The site plan shows eight regular parking stalls and also nine truck stalls along Tower Park Drive. The parking permits for a storage facility is one parking stall per two employees, and the applicant has indicated there will be less than four employees, so parking requirement requirements will be met. The business park designation will work to allow for an aesthetically pleasing professional office, commercial, and compatible industrial park setting. The area designated for business park located, locates on the future land use map contains within the comprehensive plan directs such developments along major entryway into the community to allow for proper designation or design of traffic movements as well as promote such land for development. In 2004, when the property was rezoned to R4RP, neighbors expressed concerns regarding traffic noise and the types of businesses that would be located in the area. The applicant has indicated that the proposed project is an entirely indoor storage facility with a well-designed building that will have the appearance of professional offices as opposed to your typical storage facility. The applicant also noted that they have similar facilities, noted that other similar facilities typically average about 20 vehicles per day visiting the site, so it would appear that the facility would generate a low amount of traffic for the area. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for rezon for approximately 2.267 acres of land from R4RP Plan Multiple Residence District to BP Business Park District be approved for the following reasons. It would appear that the rezoning of the land to BP Business Park District would not have negative impact on the surrounding area. The request is located within the primary growth area and can be served by extension of existing utilities. The request would be in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan, subject to the following condition, that the final plan, site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. I would also like to add that we have received two concerns from, the first one from a joining property owner regarding the request, that individual indicated her concerns regarding the property being used for storage units. And then this afternoon, we actually received a call from Renee Cabbage at 7:45 Excelsior Lane with concerns of noise, traffic, and hours of operation for the business.
Questions for staff?
This is Mikey, just the concerns from the neighborhood, just general concerns about traffic and noise.
They were concerned with how much traffic would be generated from the business itself, so.
Okay.
Just, you know, the additional traffic coming in and out, and what kind of hours that they would be coming in and out of the business.
Okay.
Which I, we have talked to the applicant, and they do have operation hours, there's certain office hours, but there's operation hours where you can come and go. I believe six to 10, I believe is what that was, so it's not going to be three in the morning. They do have those hours of being able to come and go from six to 10 every day, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, and just to explain, the reason I asked that was, I didn't know if it was just kind of a, it sounds like maybe it was just more of a general concern. Talks about it here with 20 vehicles a day, and similar sites, similar facility. We have the advantage of knowing what other facilities have, and this again is all, it's all enclosed, correct? Okay. Just for a storage facility, I can't think of much, much more that could be done to make it less intrusive for a neighborhood, it seems. They've lowered the nuisance value as much as possible here. That's all I had.
I saw there was a note in the tech notes regarding semi-turning lane. I assume on page six, we have a drawing that kind of alleviates that concern as well. If staff wants to answer that.
Engineering staff brought that up, Maryx Thorson, city engineer. Actually, it was more the roads leading to the facility. The infrastructure really wasn't designed for semi-traffic. The van-type traffic is okay, but were not really designed out there. It wasn't zoned, or something like this wasn't anticipated there, so the infrastructure really isn't there road-wise for large semis, but it appears that it may only be about one a month, and they have to schedule that, so we'd be asking them to direct them in on the Jonathan end of the project rather than try to come down Hurst. It's definitely very narrow, and turning radiuses are bad, so it would be better to come in from Jonathan, and apparently that can be scheduled, so that should help the situation.
Eric Hurst's plan to widen as well when development progresses to the west, is that correct?
Yes, and we just don't know when that will happen, of course, so that's why we had the concern. And some of the turning ratios where you hit Tower Park are not real large either. It was, just wasn't designed for semis, so, but I think if it's scheduled and they can track the traffic in the best route, that should help.
Eric Trader, city planner, so just to expand upon that, we spoke with the applicant a little bit more about that earlier today. They did note that typically about one a month is about the most they would generally expect for the larger semis. They typically don't encourage that. They actually require a semi-truck addendum to the lease agreement, and a copy of that has been provided for you, so it, it notes, whereas the owner generally does not permit semi-trucks to access the facility, and then it kind of goes on from there, but basically this is an addendum agreement that they require so that they can basically schedule that semi-truck, when it's coming in, where it's coming in from. They also want to know the truck driver, details of the truck, and insurance information. That way, if the truck would damage their facility or anything else, there's, you know, insurance on file. So it is pretty low semi-truck volume when you're talking in the order of one a month. Overall site, you know, you're talking about somewhere in the order of 20 vehicles per day, and it can fluctuate, obviously, but it's a very low traffic use, significantly less than what a comparable office development would produce.
If anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against us, we invite you to come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi there, my name is Seth Green with Green Acre Storage, and my address is 5315 J Street, Southwest Cedar Rapids. And I don't know if you have any questions for me on this, I can try to answer anything. Hopefully, the packet will kind of show you what we do.
I had one question that might have been addressed in there, as I was going through. Is it mostly like commercial storage?
No.
Or is it a mixture?
Yep, mixture. We do maybe 40%, eh, 30% commercial type storage, you know, maybe businesses for, could be tax records or that type of storage, and then household stuff, so.
And I'd just like to make a comment, thank you for submitting this information. A lot of times with the requests, we don't get all this, but it was nice, and the pictures that we had in our packet before today, and then what you've given to us today, it's helpful to see examples of what you've done, so it seems all very good. And I did appreciate the, I don't know, the letters of recommendation, but letters of reference, excuse me, for, from Dubuque and Mary.
Yeah, and our Dubuque project would be similar to this, and that one we just did in 2012, so.
Got it, okay. Oh, thank you. Everything was very professionally prepared.
This is Anderson with staff. Steph, one of the people that called in was a little concerned about traffic. Could you talk about, a little bit about kind of your average daily use that you see?
So the Dubuque facility is probably a pretty good example. This facility will have maybe about 600 units, so it's going to be very similar. That one's 98,600 square foot, so really square footage-wise, pretty comparable. Traffic, you know, this is your, this is like a third-generation storage facility. Your typical storage, what they started out with is a long skinny row of garages, and then it maybe has gotten wider over the years, and now this is the new type of system that most people do. You do it inside, especially in Iowa with the weather and stuff, so we usually have about 20 cars up in Dubuque in a day. You know, and times of the month are peak, you know, like ends of the month or beginning of the month, there might be a higher traffic. Maybe the middle of the month, you won't see as much, just because people don't move around. Leases expire at the ends of months on apartments, so you see a bigger trend, you know, or a higher volume then, than during the middle. So it could be some days 10, and then other days it might be 25, so. Traffic-wise, we have everything inside on this facility the same as our Dubuque. They actually just pull in, come up to the unloading area, a sensor notices that a vehicle's there, opens up the door for them, they pull in, no one even sees them unloading. When they're ready to go, they push a button, it's on a timer, and they exit the facility. So you don't even see them, it's not like a dock system where you see a row of semis unloading and stuff. Everything is done inside.
And then you have a commercial-grade elevator that goes up.
Yep, yep. Two elevators in the facility. They're similar to like a hospital, the largest one you can get without going to, you know, a special design or something, but they'll handle 5,000 pounds, but they're about nine foot, 10 foot long inside, and, but it works well. We've had a lot of good feedback from our Dubuque. I was concerned about the elevator, if people would actually move stuff to the top floor, but they will, and they don't even, it's not even a concern. And everything, you know, our 12-inch storm, this is, I'll never build another traditional type storage just because of shoveling doors and the weather, and it's just not good.
So they are climate-controlled?
Yep, yep. So we heat and air condition them, so in the summertime, they have air condition too, and in the wintertime, we keep it about 60 degrees in there, so.
Any other questions?
High-quality project, yeah, looks very nice. Professional.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, there's not anyone else in the audience, I'll turn it back to staff for a discussion or motion.
This is Anderson with staff, just one additional note, we, I think we're also the callers that were concerned about it. Let me go back just a little bit to tell you a little, well, with all this property was rezoned back in 2004, we had three neighbors, and they are about a quarter mile to the northwest of this site, but they asked to be notified on all requests. They were concerned, they just received their courtesy letter, so they're outside of our required notification area. They received their courtesy letter, I believe they said yesterday, I think we mailed it out on the 28th, because all the mail goes from Des Moines to come back here now, I guess, but. So they were concerned they didn't have time to get here. Again, we asked them for what their specific concerns were. I know Mr. Green is in a hurry to keep this moving ahead for his planning project, but I wanted to share that with you. That was what was in their email as well, is they wanted to see it tabled. I don't know, Seth, if you want to talk a little bit about your timeline as to why it's important to keep it moving now as well, but that was, I expressed that to them, and their, and my reply to them is that the developer has requested it be on this meeting, he's a, he has a timeline for his project as well. This is just a recommendation to the council, so they still have an opportunity at that hearing.
Probably the biggest thing is planning. A project like this, so you got a 100,000-square-foot building, is just getting all the planning in place so that I can hit the summer schedule. In Dubuque, we did a, well, it wasn't supposed to go into the winter, but it did, and it really hampered things, because our type of construction is different. We go floor to floor to floor, and the elevators, they won't start putting elevators up till you have it all weathered in, and it was a challenge up in Dubuque on that. So just the planning, I'm working with an architect to dress up the building, and then I'm also working with the company that actually does the storage units, and to get those two to work, it's probably a two-month planning process before we can even do anything, and make sure we get all the concerns of the city. It's, you know, the engineer has to survey the lot and make sure we have all the detention and everything, so that's the reason why we're trying to get it moving along, so that we can hit that May construction and not go into the winter.
Thank you. And just for staff, this is approved today, goes to city council, it'll be Monday, this upcoming Monday or the following Monday?
This is Schrader with staff. They will be acting Monday to set a date of hearing, which would be two weeks out from that, so I don't have a calendar in front of me what Monday that hits.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I guess from my vantage point, I can't think that this facility is going to have any more cars than the car wash does, just right down the street, or the people that work in Tower Park, you know. It just, I don't think, it sounds like an unreasonable request to build this kind of this facility in that area. So I would make a motion that we approve this application with those said qualifications that were given by staff, the recommendations, and I think it's a good addition to our city.
Real quick, before we get a second on that, if we could get a motion in a second to close the hearing?
Oh, thanks.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved by Mike and Seconded that we close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay.
Second.
I would like to make a motion that we approve this recommendation for the changing in zoning with the subject condition to, that it meets all of the city codes, regulations, et cetera.
Second, second.
Case been moved by Carol and Seconded that we go ahead and we approve the rezoning to the BP Business Park District. Is any other final discussion?
I know, I'd like to join that, I think it's a great project, it was really impressed by the professionalism, and I know when we downsized from our house and the kids moved out, we have the apartment down the street, you have to put some of that stuff somewhere, and I would appreciate a nice facility that we don't have to wait till the snow thaws before we can get in, and I think just the way times are, there's going to be a need for storage, and if we're going to do it, do it right, I was very impressed, so that's my two cents.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, the time is now 4:29. Our next item on the agenda is a special permit. This is a request for J&amp;K Development LLC for a special permit to allow for a three-year extension of the approved two-year temporary rubble fill and rock crushing site for use in association with Highway 63 Reconstruction Project located at 7 West Airline Highway, and it begins on page 10. Hey, staff report.
This is Schrader with staff. This is a request for the three-year extension to the previously approved temporary special permit for rubble fill and rock crushing, rubble fill, stockpiling, and rock crushing at 7 West Airline Highway. Applicant was the, the sister company was the previous contractor on the last phase of the Highway 63 reconstruction project. The next phase of that is starting to move forward, and the applicant's sister company is proposing to bid on that as well, and would like to, if they get the bid, continue to operate this site for stockpiling and rock crushing related to the Highway 63 reconstruction project. The Iowa DOT is currently looking at a December 2015 letting for construction that would start in 2016, and would likely be a two-year project wrapping up in 2017. The applicant's asking for a three-year extension, which would extend the approval until June 30th, 2018, which provides sufficient time for all stockpiled material to be removed and the site restored. There was some opposition to the previously approved rubble fill site from neighbors to the north. However, the site was operated as a stockpile and crushing site under that previous approval with minimal issues. Previous concerns included excessive noise, dust, or other nuisances, although the use as it was previously would be temporary in nature, with activity at the site being a fairly short period of time out of the total time requested. Surrounding land uses are a mix of commercial and residential and agricultural. The proposed rubble fill area consists of approximately four and a half acres of the 20-acre parcel located at the southwest corner of the intersection of West Airline Highway and US Highway 63. Requesting to use a portion of that property for temporary rubble fill area to allow them to stockpile materials such as dirt, concrete, and asphalt, and then crush the rubble to be removed from the site and reused in road construction. Rubble fill sites, which would typically be permanent fill, but the ordinance provides that any fill, which would include temporary fill, would be considered a rubble fill site, and clean fill is considered a rubble fill site as well, so it does have to go through the special permit approval process. The applicants have provided a site plan and documentation of the proposed request. The zoning ordinance has a list of standards that such a request must meet, and staff feels that the request does meet those standards. Staff is recommending that the extension of the temporary special permit for a rubble fill site for stockpiling and rock crushing located at 7 West Airline Highway be approved for the following reasons, and with the following conditions. One, the use is temporary in conjunction with the nearby reconstruction of US Highway 63, and the site will be returned to conditions similar to prior to stockpile and crushing activities, with permanent fill designed to grade and level the site to make it more attractive for future development. And two, the rubble fill site is a permitted use in the zoning district upon issuance of a special permit, subject to the following conditions. Number one, activities related with the delivery of material, rock crushing, or the removal of material shall be conducted between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and noise generated from rock crushing or any other activities on the site shall not exceed 80 decibels at the property lines. Two, adequate dust control measures such as watering of stockpiles and crushing activities shall be undertaken in compliance with air quality permit approved by the DNR. And three, all material brought onto the site other than clean filler dirt used to permanently fill the site And three, all material brought onto the site other than clean filler dirt used to permanently fill the site shall be removed from the site no later than June 30th, 2018. And no additional fill material, clean fill, or other shall be brought to the site after June 30th, 2018. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. You said that there was previously opposition, what, two years ago? Or probably three years ago now? Were all of those folks who registered complaints notified? Or did we, did we keep track at that time of who expressed concerns, even if they were within our typical notification radius?
We mailed notice to the same area that we mailed notice last time. I guess, no, we did not specifically track if some of those in opposition were beyond the buffer area. I think that the vast majority of them were within the 250-foot buffer area.
The thing that, I guess, first, when I saw this, I was like, I didn't vote in favor of it last time, and I won't do it again this time. And I think we do, the people that live in this area and the businesses in this area, a great disservice by extending this another three years. When the reasoning behind the approval of it the first time was, oh, it's just going to be for a short time. And then as soon as, as 63 is done, then everything will go back to where it was. And now we're talking about having it extended another three years. And I think if we give our word that this is what our plan is, and then we retract that, then I don't know how people are going to have very much confidence in us. So that's just my feelings.
No, I felt the same feeling, I remember that, we had this really pretty filled up with people. And I can remember, did we relocate from the original site? Because I don't remember approving that as well. We had concerns because there were citizens that said the trucks were uncovered, they were coming beyond the time. I can remember that, like, that was at least a couple of years ago or a year and a half?
What I recall was, they might have been operating it without the permit, and then it came before us.
They started operating before getting the improvement.
Yeah, and so, and I think there was a lot of controversy. I'm torn on this, I support it, but it's, it's a close call in that it's, the alternative, I don't know if that means they have to drive farther or somewhere else, if there's more truck traffic, they'll go with it. And it's, it's an inconvenience certainly, but it's also for the long-term gain of improving the road of Highway 63. And it's just, construction is messy and inconvenient and loud. Now, on the other hand, it's easy for me to say that because I don't live right by here, and so I understand that. But the reason I support it now is, I did think they cleaned up their act, no pun intended, once they came in here, and from what I saw just driving by it and seeing it, is that they were, it was kept up much better, and the temporary nature of it. But it's, there's no easy answer on this. And, but that's also with construction, I guess, too. It's just, it's...
This is Anderson with staff, I think one of the alternatives that was offered last time, and if you saw how they redid I-380, is they actually did the crushing in place on the road itself. And so we thought this was a better alternative than that, that you'd be doing it through the subsequent phases of 63 going south. You'd actually see them in the right of way trying to crush it and all that, because obviously you're getting closer to the residential area, where there, here it's a little bit more contained. We also, I think, last time talked a little bit in the discussion about this, their overall goal seems to be the redevelopment of the site as well, so at least this temporary use will lead to a better and higher use for that corner at some point.
Well, budgeting purposes for just the DOT's improvements, I mean, they're only section by section, so, you know.
I would say they have at least three years left.
They're asking for what their contract was out, and now their contract's extended because they're getting the next section, I think, is, I think that's...
And they're hoping to get it.
Yeah, maybe they're hoping to get it, so. You know, I guess the goal is to get 63 completed and improved as, as, you know, it's, it's, the section in front of Allen Hospital is just, you know, completely different and for the better, I think, so.
This is Schrader with staff, I apologize, I should have put the minutes from the last action in there, that way you could kind of, one, review what the vote was, but also get a feel for some of that discussion. And I should have done that, I forgot to do that. But there was a sizable amount of opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't remember what the commission's vote was, I know it definitely was not unanimous. That is just a recommendation, that one was just a recommendation to the Board of Adjustment, just as this one will be. There was still some opposition when it went to the Board of Adjustment last time. I would say it was less, and my recollection is that the Board of Adjustment unanimously approved it. And I think it is something to be said that now we're at the request to extend it for the next phase, and there's no one here to speak against it.
I think it also had a lot to do with the strict conditions that we put on it, too, versus there was kind of a open, you know, to maybe some other interpretations when they first started.
I would also suggest, though, that if I were a resident of this neighborhood, had come to planning and zoning, voiced my concern at that point, and it happened anyways, you could very well see where a homeowner would be discouraged. So I don't necessarily think that just because there aren't folks here in opposition that everyone's peachy with the concept. Real quick question for staff. Has this sort of site ever been in any other location for this long of a time in the city? Or I guess, I shouldn't say ever, within the last however long you can speak to?
I don't recall any, no, the...
During, during the Highway 20 construction, they had a number of temporary sites, I think most notably down by where the water park is now. And there's actually one at, thanks for reminding me, at 63 and 20 where PCI puts their equipment, I think was rezoned temporarily. But you can't rezone things tempor, it doesn't automatically go back, so you'd have to go back and have action taken on it. And I don't know that we ever got back to getting to it. But there were some, there were some actions like that, where they rezoned some sites along the corridor to make it easy for rock crushing, equipment storage, and all that that weren't necessarily commercial or industrial at that time.
There was one down, is that like Robin Road area, do you remember that one? Downing, somewhere in that area, there was a site that was rezoned to like an R3 CZ conditional zoning for a temporary, and maybe it was like, I think that one was a temporary concrete batch plant as opposed to like a rock crushing site. So it's kind of similar, but rezoning a site for a temporary use is not exactly a real smart way to handle it. And our ordinance isn't real clear on a rock crushing facility as it is now. There really isn't anything that addresses the rock crushing. It's the rubble pile, so stockpiling, that's really addressed. And it was really intended to cover permanent filling, but there's nothing that says temporary filling isn't covered by it. So that's what we determined kind of kicked in the special permit requirement. And just since, you know, rock crushing was part of the operation, it just kind of naturally came into the discussion. But there really isn't too much in the ordinance that addresses a rock crushing, a temporary rock crushing operation. So, you know, I don't know if that's something we might want to look at addressing. Temporary batch plans, you know, concrete asphalt batch plans, and temporary rock crushing facilities, if there would be kind of a better way to handle them, I don't, we'll have to evaluate that.
A quick follow-up, Noel, to your recollection, were any of those sites for a total of five, really six years? Or was it a shorter term for those temporary sites?
I would guess for the Highway 20 project, they're probably very close to five years. That was a little before me working here, but it was right before me working here, yeah.
And you were talking about the intersection between 20 and 63?
20 and 63, and then as they built Highway 20 all the way to the east, I think there was one also there at I-380 and 20. They had some more temporary sites over there where they basically, we actually had a recent request for a concrete temporary batch plant there as well, and I think they went to a different site on, but...
But we're not talking about areas that have a majority of residents, homeowners.
Correct.
And this is totally different, this has a lot of homeowners.
I mean, the one at 20 and 63 had the, you know, the timberline condos were up on the, on the ribs there.
But still quite a ways away.
But I think they have a 40-foot buffer area of evergreen trees, too.
How close are the residences to this, close in?
They're residential right across the street, to the north.
Yeah, and the applicant is here, so he'll be up in a minute, and kind of, he can answer questions as well. But they did place a pretty decent-sized, fairly tall berm of dirt along most of the stretch of Airline Highway to help screen some of the operations from those residences to the north. And they, they're not right, the operation is back off the road a little ways, and the houses are set back a fairly good distance on the other side of the road, it's a pretty treed area. But, you know, they're pretty much right across the road.
And some of that goes to the tricky part of, it's, it's not constructing a new Highway 63, it's Logan, it's right in the city. And I think that's why it's probably a more complex project, it's just, it's trickier all the way around.
My name is Ron Fadness, I'm with G&amp;K Development Skyline Construction, and it's certainly available to answer any questions. I think the big things that we would like to emphasize is that despite the substantial opposition that anytime anything crushing, cement, asphalt, whatever engenders, as I think the room demonstrates, after people experience it, they realize, okay, it wasn't quite such a big deal. Even over the course of the couple of years of construction, I think the complaints were minimal. And we certainly anticipate that going forward, that will be the same thing. Also, as mentioned, the alternative of having these crushing operations taking place right in the middle of the construction zone, all the way up and down Logan Avenue, is certainly not appealing to, to anyone, least of all us, because it imposes, you know, risks of, you know, people being in the construction zone, right in the middle of it. And, you know, if concerns are that this is taking place near homes on the outskirts of town, imagine if it's taking place at homes on either side of the street. As I said, this is a situation where nobody ever welcomes us, but we can always hope that at the end of the project, they don't curse us out too badly, we feel that's been the case here. And the future development of 63 is going to require this in one way, shape, or form. The current thought is that there will be two phases. One going from the southern boundary of the current construction through the dip under the railroad overpass there, and ending, I believe, it's a Dane Street, and then beginning at Dane Street and continuing, actually, I believe, all the way across the river. And we would hope to work on one or the other, both, whatever of those sites, and use the same process that has been utilized in the past. If you have any questions about operations, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Mrs. Pack, and I have a question. What, like, what are the decibels right now, what kind of activities that are currently going on that maybe residents are already experiencing? Would there be much of a difference in the change of dust or noise?
No.
Pretty much the same?
Yeah, it would be the same processes as were occurring previously. The noise limitation that was in place is from city ordinance, I believe, and was with 80 decibels measured at the property line. And the measurements that were done before, the semis traveling on Airline Highway or Highway 63 emitted far beyond the 80 decibels that we were permitted on-site. And certainly those operate 24 hours a day, three to six, five days a year, whereas the crushing operations were contained to a couple of different windows throughout the process when the rubble was brought in, and then a crusher brought on-site. And for, you know, one week, two weeks, whatever, the crushing was done during the daytime. And the remaining 50 weeks of the year, there's really nothing more than what there is right now, which is a pile of crushed material on the site.
And so, in what you're doing, you're, you're pulling up the concrete on Logan Avenue into chunks, put that in the bag of the truck, you bring it here, drop, stockpile it, and then bring in the crusher to...
Right, and then bring the material back to be the base of the new roadway. Except the asphalt from the shouldering, that doesn't, it can get reused, but we're not doing that, any asphalt project there, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll turn this back to the commission for discussion or a motion. I guess my concern has been just the noise level, but again, there isn't anything in the room. I don't know if it's because of the mailing, or maybe they've already experienced what construction is like. So I, with Mike, I would like to see the project done, so that the sooner it's done, the sooner everything goes back to normal in 63. At the same time, be considerate for those people that do have to live near rock crushing. And I think it's those words, rock crushing, is a bit of the dust and the noise. But if the decibels are down, this still has to go, before the council or Board of Adjustments first. So they would, so if anyone did have a concern, they would still have an opportunity.
Am I correct in remembering that crushing was happening before planning and zoning action?
This is Schrader with staff, no, they were stockpiling on the site. They did not start crushing until after the approvals.
Okay.
This is Buckles. I live in that area, 63, that was under construction, and I appreciate anything that they do to get it done. I mean, it was, it was delayed for a year just because of the railroad crossing and stuff. Yes, there's a lot of inconvenience for even the people that live in the neighborhoods along that area. And there will be for the people down the road a little further. But when you think about, I'm not sure yet whether they voted on filling in that hole or not and going over. I've seen, I've seen proposals to go over, but that in itself is, is a real problem with ice down there. I mean, it goes down to one lane and stuff. Its improvements, and I think a lot of the people that live out in this area, they probably appreciate, too, the, the... The, I mean, it's a temporary problem for them, maybe five months out of the year, five or six months out of the year, they have to live with that. And like I say, it's a limited time, the decibel level's going to be up from the crusher. As far as truck traffic, I'm sure there's lots of truck traffic regardless of the construction because of all the industry out on Airline Highway. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this, subject to the conditions listed about the time limits and the decibel level and the dust control on this.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Steve and seconded that we approve the temporary special permit for the rubble, rubble fill site. Let's do a roll call vote, is there any final discussion before we take the vote?
I know that, I know that we had adopted sort of a rule of thumb, last month, I believe, that commissioners who were going to vote against the measure that was being suggested to, to approve or vice versa, sort of explain their reasoning. I, I agree with Carol, that had I been on the commission at that point, I wouldn't have voted in favor of it. I think there were other options, I don't think that the DOT is going to stop their progress on 63 with this site being approved by planning and zoning. Frankly, I, a bad idea. Frankly, I, a bad idea isn't necessarily, continuing a bad idea for the sake of convenience isn't something that I think is, is a great idea. And so I'm, I'm definitely going to be voting against the temporary permit.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. And a yes vote is in favor, a no is against.
Goff, so soon?
No.
Hall?
No.
Young?
Yes.
Mehe?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Tackett?
Yes. Okay, the time is 4:55. Our next item on the agenda is a vacate and dedicate. This request is by Nguyen and Lee, LLC, to vacate a portion of the existing 20-foot wide storm sewer easement and to dedicate a new 20-foot wide storm sewer easement located in Lot A of Crossroads Retail Center Edition. And it begins on page 18. Staff report.
This is Andrew with staff. As noted, they are requesting to vacate that existing 20-foot storm sewer easement. There is a 24-inch storm sewer within that easement. However, they will be dedicating a new 20-foot wide easement a little further to the east and constructing the same size storm sewer in that new easement. They're in the early stages of constructing a new restaurant on this Lot A in question, which is located on the north side of Sears Street next to Supertarget. There is a fully signed permanent easement agreement, which allows the city to install, maintain, and repair the new storm sewer. Also is noted within that easement agreement that the city shall not be responsible for replacing in kind any surface improvements removed during the exercise of rights provided by so, by the permanent easement agreement. Staff recommends approval of that request to vacate a portion of the existing storm sewer easement and dedicate a new storm sewer easement located on Lot A of Crossroads Retail Center Edition, as the request would not appear to have negative impact upon the surrounding area. And the request would not appear to have negative impact upon drainage in the area, as there will be a new easement dedicated for the new storm sewer to the east.
Okay, questions for staff?
This is Mehe. As a representative of the applicant, I'm going to be abstaining on this vote.
Okay, any discussion? I didn't see anyone out there, so I guess I will turn this back to the commission for discussion or, or motion.
This is Mike Young. I'll make a motion to approve the request to vacate.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mike and seconded that we go ahead and we approve the request to vacate. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Okay, the next item under C is a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate a portion of the existing 20-foot wide alley located adjacent to lots 1, 2, 9, and 10 within block 16 of Hayes Edition, generally located northeast of Black Hawk Street between West 16th Street and West 17th Street. It begins on page 26. Staff report.
Okay, real briefly, this area of alley is between two sections of city property, and city property that we're proposing to buy to put together as a larger land pad for commercial development. So therefore, staff recommends that we vacate the 2,700 square foot unused private alley to be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The request to vacate is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. The request would not appear to meet, would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And also, there are no utilities in the area to be vacated.
Okay, questions for staff?
Noel, can you go over that aerial and just identify what properties the city owns versus private ownership?
So the aerial up on the screen is, what page is it? That's page 29. You can see the storage buildings.
Use your cursor or not?
I don't know if it, how well it shows up. See that?
You can see it on that cursor.
Is it 3E?
There's the storage buildings we sold. That was a former Deloil site. This is the vacated area, just to the northwest of them. It's a street, planted as a street section. The city actually owns the area back behind or to the, above the red area. And they own one of the houses below the red area.
The ones that were last we owned.
Yeah. The house is vacant, the, the other house is vacant that we do not own yet. It would still have access off of the vacated road right away if necessary. And we have filed, begun the process to acquire it.
Which one's that?
The one, the one that Chris is trying to reach.
It just looks like a dark hole, Chris.
It is a dark hole.
Well, I read this. I completely understand why the request is made, it makes sense. But I was thinking, who would object to this? It's the city, I mean, it's kind of circulated, the city requesting to vacate an easement the city has, on city property.
I think some of the good news, too, is Forge Industries actually donated the, the larger lot above the red area that kind of sits back there. They donated that to us for economic redevelopment purposes. They owned it, didn't have a need for it. We're working with them for future. They have some more land in the area. We have some good prospects looking to build in these infill sites, so we're, we're very excited to get this vacated and make those longer, deeper lots for, for bigger sized buildings.
Yeah. Could you see that vacate getting expanded, then? Or is that the first one?
Further to the west?
Yeah.
We could. I know that they use some of that area to the west for some vehicle access points. So as we continue to work with the property owners, it may make sense to vacate some more as we learn more of their exact plans for expansion and new buildings.
I have a question. Eric and I visited, I could blow back about how there's so much mixed residence and commercial. Will this help kind of even out, so that it's becoming a little bit more informed as far as... It just seems like that there's patches, there's patches of that. I'm thinking maybe with the development, it might kind of even out the mixture a little bit. So it's more of a, is that kind of a thinking down the road?
Definitely this area, I mean, you know, just a block or two to the south is Highway 218. And then to the north is the river. We really see a big mix of smaller, light industrial type buildings, some commercial buildings and some residential. A large portion of the residential are also rentals in this area. So we've been working to try and create as best we can kind of a, in the, the middle of the city type business park, industrial park, again, light industrial. We've seen a lot of good success on the, the other sites that we've acquired, you know, turning in. A lot of them are abandoned buildings, so we've used the 67A process to acquire them. It's been empty and falling apart. A lot of them were owned by tax sale buyers, so they weren't paying taxes, they were being sold over and over. And I know Bob Fishel's built a building on one, Roger Klingfuss built one on his next to the Transmission Place. We've probably seen about, I think, I think we calculated about 520,000 in new commercial investment into these small lots. So it's really been a nice, nice redevelopment to bring some positive tax money back in this area. And eliminate blame.
Any other questions from the commission or for staff? Okay, I'll turn over back to the commission for either final thoughts or a motion.
This is Mike Young. I'll make a motion to approve the request to vacate.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mike and seconded that we approve the request to vacate. Is there any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Okay, our final item is in discussion items. Any, anyone that would like to bring to the table?
Yeah, this is Grandma Staff. I handed Carol a form that's going to be passed around. The Iowa State University Extension Office holds a yearly introduction to Planning and Zoning Commission member workshop. And this year, they will be in Waterloo at the Center for the Arts on March 31st. It's a Tuesday evening, starts at 5:30 and runs till about 8:30, 8:45. They will provide dinner if you, if you sign up. Basically, just going to see if any commission members want, want to sign up for it. They have come to Waterloo before, and I've been to one, and it's pretty helpful. Our county commission members attended that as well and just get some good insight as to what the role is of the planning commission members. And especially with some of the things that have happened with the commission lately, this might be something that some of the commission members might want to attend. But you can look at the brochure, it kind of just gives you an overview. If you are interested in, in attending, I would say you can let me know, or Eric, or Noel. There is a registration fee, but I think we will cover that. So if you'd be, if you would be interested, just let staff know and we can, we can get you signed up for it.
We'll cover that. You have to give us at least three yes votes in the next year. No, I'm just kidding.
And I was just thinking, I need to get cracking. So I'm, I'm here because I'm on the school board, and I'm not running for reelection in the school board. So it turns up in September. So it might be a good idea. There are a couple, a few other board members who terms, the terms are staggered. So it might be a good time to transition with them. I put that on my ticket list.
Yeah, if you know who you're going to give the honor to serving on this commission to, it'd be great.
Well, Noel, and my question, my only question is, you have, we have one school board member, the Waterloo School's boundary area goes into Evansdale, Gilbertville, Raymond, even parts of Cedar Falls, that sort of thing. We have one board member that lives in Evansdale. But do you have to live in Waterloo?
No, I mean, it's up to the school board to appoint whoever they want.
But I didn't know if we'd have to take him off the possibility, but, okay. But Noel, I'll, I'll double check. I'll check with...
We'll even act like we still like him, Mike.
No, there, there are many school board members. I think that would be good. Be happy to serve. I'll get to work on that.
Would you like a response now or down the line?
Now's fine, down the line, either way. Just talk to Shane afterwards or...
Yeah, or send me an email. I can compile a nameless, and I can get it to Patty, and she can, and your people sign up.
Okay, any other discussion items?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Cavis and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. Any final thoughts, discussion? All those in favor say aye, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, meeting secured.